I'm going to call this meeting to order. Can I get a roll call, please, for attendance?
Ms. Hockenberry?
Here.
Mr. Lawrence?
Here.
Mr. Lofterson?
Here.
Mr. Meeks?
Here.
Ms. Teetz?
Here.
Mr. Wodisca?
Here.
Ms. Rogers is absent this evening.
And then can I get a motion for the agenda? And it looks like we need to flip.
I move that the agenda be adopted with the exception of new business 8A and B. We will take B first and A second.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so the agenda's been amended to flip 8A and 8B. Do we have any planning commissioner reports? Ms. Hockenberry?
A quick little announcement, I guess, that I was asked to be the liaison from the Planning Commission to the housing -- what is the name of that?
Commission?
No, not -- yeah, Housing Commission, yeah. That's it. I always get careful because of the corporation and the commission. But anyway, to do the rewrite on the affordable housing plan. And we just got the first meeting this past week or so. And my advice along that way was just to make it something that will work for change and to be very, very careful about getting something in place for use of developer money for contributions if that comes about rather than units. And to just make sure it's going to be something that the council can work with. And I will be reporting back to you anything that comes along.
Okay.
And if you have any ideas, and you know, I'll make sure you get any draft stuff. But I think there's a lot to be redone in that area.
One more comment, please.
Okay, anyone else? I did want to mention that since our last meeting, we had a public meeting on the North Washington Streetscape -- well, sorry, North Washington Area Plan. North Washington Streetscape we did a few years ago, and it's kind of stuck in my head. Anyway, we were working, we had a public meeting and had the public come in and talk about what they would like to see for development in the North Washington corridor along Jefferson and the streets adjacent that have commercial property on them. I thought it was a really great meeting. We got a lot of great input from the public. It was, the staff was great. They all came in early on a Saturday morning to help us out. And we had a lot of commissioners there. We had some city councilmen there, some EDA members. So I thought it was a very great meeting, and I wanted to thank the staff for it. Mr. Snyder and the planning staff, you guys did a great job. And Ms. G, do we have any receipt of petitions on items that are on the agenda?
I have none.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Snyder, do we have a planning director's report?
Yes. As you mentioned, one of the highlights of last month was the big meeting with the kickoff of the North Washington Street Plan. And again, we appreciate the commissioners' involvement. It was rough weather, but we had a very good turnout, and so we'll be trying to move forward with that. I do want to mention we have a resignation. Garrison Kit, who's been working with us and has helped us quite a bit, is going to be moving back to Virginia Beach. His last day is the 1st of December. So we're going to need to fill that position as soon as possible. But he had some special skills which we'll be working to try to replace or see if we can maintain some kind of a contractual relationship with him. But he's done a lot of good work and appreciate his work. And I know you all have seen a lot of that, certainly a good contribution to our small area planning. So we'll have to think about the best way to try to fill that gap because clearly that kind of skill is helpful in us meeting those needs to create those plans. We've been working real hard to move the Hilton Garden Inn forward. And the plans are, we think we're going to be signing off on the site plan and all of the building permits and so forth by the end of this week. It's a short week this week. As you know, the city is closed on Thursday, Friday, and a half-day on Wednesday. We're in casual dress mode this week, and we're all suiting, we're all suitably attired. But we are very pleased that we've been able to work that through. We've been using some of the techniques that I talked about earlier of plan review using the computers back and forth, and we've been having weekly meetings to move that forward. So as a test project, I think it's been a successful one. And we've been able to expedite those plans much more quickly than I think we normally would have been the case. We've also completed some repainting of the counter area where, which as you know, if you've visited us, is one of the busiest parts of City Hall, along with the Treasurer's Office and DMV. That's where the public comes a lot. And so we've, with the help of some of our staff, we've put up some trim, and we've gotten it painted and taken down the clutter. We're going to be putting up some flat screens to help give people more information, be able to pull up maps and things from the computer to help the customers. So if you're in our office, come take a look. We've also redone the Laurel Room, have a better place to meet with citizens, developers, and staff. And so anyway, we're trying to present a new look, and it's been helpful for us in terms of our work. So I invite you to do those things. Looking forward to December, we're looking at body dynamics, which you heard about this evening. Subdivision at Fulton Avenue and property maintenance code as active items. I don't see anything on the horizon for the meeting potentially of the 19th. So one of the questions for the commission is whether you'd want to have that meeting or not. So.
No.
My question would be, is, at that point, would we have materials to work through on the North Washington Area Plan? Will we have comments from the public meeting available? Or, you know, I'd like to take advantage of where we can to keep working on that because we have a tight schedule.
We'll keep you posted on that. At this point, we don't have material put together for that. And it may be that we can have some of that at the December 5th meeting, in that those items may not take all that much time. So we'll work with you on that.
Less meetings, better than more meetings. Nothing to it. I just want to get it in the record.
Mr. Meeks, I agree with you, less means are better than more meetings. But I also know that we are on a timeline to have the area plan completed, and--
I'm going to read the minutes for that.
Okay.[432.52][432.52](Laughter). But if we, if it's not a good use of our time, we won't meet on December 19th.
Also, well, we can give you an update on the 5th as to where we are on things. And clearly, this resignation is going to affect us to some extent. As you know, too, we are looking forward to, you know, a full year ahead, I believe. And we're also going to be working on budget. So maybe a chance for us to talk with you about any thoughts you have about the budget and the needs the commission may have in terms of fulfilling its work plan. So with those highlights, I'll leave it to you for questions, if you have any. Thank you.
Vice Chair Lawrence just made a comment, too, that we probably ought to talk about the annual program. And it would be good if we did that in December, or at least started to flesh out what our plans are for 2012.
Excellent idea. Thank you.
And review, yeah, include in review 2011 and see where we are and where we need to go.
And I think we've developed a draft of the report for the year that Ms. G has been working on.
I've been working on the annual report on a monthly basis, but not the annual program.
Okay, right. And the annual program, I think we ought to work together with staff to work on that. Oh, I wanted to, I did want to mention, I have visited the Laurel Room since its rehab, and it looks quite lovely. I know that our building inspector, Mr. McDonald, did a lot of the woodwork in it. And oddly, his daughter joined my Brownie troupe last month, so I was able to thank him for the woodwork, which shows you the city is all interconnected. Anyway, but it does look really nice, and it's just, it's just nice to see the pride in your workspace, and especially knowing that developers and the public are coming into that area to have it look so much better.
And as we've tested it on meeting to talk about planning and zoning and other issues, it's just a really good space to work in, and it wasn't before. So it's a good tool for getting work done.
Do any commissioners have any questions for Mr. Snyder or Ms. Hockenberry?
Yes. We had that work session with council, and a lot of proposals were brought up for some changes. How close are we to having those go to vote?
I believe that council wanted us to come back with transitions and also the other items. The one that is coming forward for a vote would be the property maintenance code. So we'll have to go back to council, I think, and get a second look at those. We'll have to schedule those on their work session, then to be coming back to you. It would be, if there are commissioners who have a special interest in the Greenway Downs issue, I think your help in us doing outreach with the community could be helpful. So think about if some of you have some particular interest in that. I think some commissioners could be very helpful in that.
I've got a couple of names of people.
And we have gotten names from commissioners of people who are in the community who could be helpful in this as well.
I think that there were a couple of areas of concern at the work session, or things that the Planning Commission brought to City Council that would be good to act on as fairly, as soon as possible with any, with in mind of any future development coming in. And have things in place, particularly like the setbacks and things like that. So we've got that in place. We don't have to sit there and argue about silly little things.
And we are also working on looking at process improvements, which we haven't had a chance to talk with you in detail about. But that's another item that we'd like to discuss with you and get your feedback as we try to move that forward towards the work session.
And Ms. Teetz, one other thing that, just staff-related. I made a great gift to our wonderful clerk. But anyway, I thought, you know, I thought, oh, great, you know, I was joking overly excited, Debbie. But she said, yeah. But she might want to make a request to members of the Planning Commission.
Rubber bands that you gave her?
Yeah, yeah. It was really thrilling.
We're also looking--
I keep them away from the cats, you know, the government mail stuff.
And if you have a pile of binder clips piling up at your home, we'd be happy to take those back and reuse them.
Okay.
Thank you.
So when you bring your bags back next time, if you have clips or rubber bands, keep them with the bags. Thank you.
See such excitement.
Any other questions for Mr. Snyder?
I don't know if this would be covered in our review of 2011 and our plan moving forward to 2012. But I'd be, having attended the small area planning session, which was very exciting and which was the first of hopefully more to come, it would be nice to know what the follow-on steps are for that particular neighborhood. And the other area of interest, particular interest to myself, is where we are with reviewing the ZOAC recommendations. What's next, in other words? What should be on our plate and what we should be considering moving forward? So if those could be incorporated in that planning, that would be appreciated.
Mr. Lawrence?
Two quick things. First, you're talking about schedules, and some of us are more dedicated than others. But I won't be here for the December 5th meeting, just so that when I forget to send an email out, I've covered myself. Secondly, on Greenway Downs, I'd be happy to do any outreach. I don't know if I know anybody offhand who lives there, but if you're looking for people to, you know, send out flyers, go to meetings, whatever, just count me in.
Any other commissioners? Oh, Mr. Lofterson?
I'd also be willing to pitch in with John. I live on Rosemary Lane, so it's not that far away from where I live. So I'd be happy to help out as well.
And I'll also help. I gave you guys names on three or four of the streets, so I could definitely continue. And several of the people I gave you names were part of Lift Serves. So they said that if we gave them information, they would put it out on that street's Lift Serve.
And part of this is thinking through what is the best strategy for letting people know efficiently and effectively the information so we don't have misinformation out there and people understand what we're trying to accomplish.
Yeah, because this weekend I was at a lacrosse tournament. I had one parent who lived right across from TJ who was telling all the other parents about the $30 million expansion that was going to create a new school at TJ. So, and she lives right across the street. So, yeah, I think making sure that people get the information is good. I didn't realize we had $30 million for a new school, so it was informative.
That's good to know. But the people I've talked to about Greenway Downs, they seem very excited about it. So I think you're going to get some willing workers.
I think they do seem excited. They just want to make sure everything's in their best interests, of course. I've got one question from Ms. G. I was just curious, have we seen any movement on the Fulton Street in terms of moving forward to have it listed? I know they have to go through the process.
I'm not aware of them listing the property for sale at this time. Their application for Part II of their subdivision to create a new lot, 25B, is in process and will be before you on December 5th. And I think he wanted to get that subdivision approved before he began to market the other units.
Yeah, he said he couldn't market that.
Okay. I just wanted to check. Thank you. Seeing no old business, we're going to move on to new business. And with our change, we're going to be dealing with the capital improvements program amendment and budget amendment to include the receipt of highway safety improvements program grant award of $155,000. And I believe Ms. Mester is going to go over this for us.
Good evening, Planning Commission, and thanks for adjusting your agenda so that I could be with you now and then go back down to the council work session for my other items. What is before you is an amendment to the current FY12 CIP. Council has done a first reading of this ordinance, TO 11-22, on November 14th, and referred it out to the Planning Commission for your consideration tonight. And if action is taken tonight, council has this tentatively calendared for November 28th to approve on second reading the ordinance. I would request, unless there's unstanuating circumstances, that Planning Commission acts tonight because in terms of the CIP amendments, there are grant funding and there are needed projects, and staff would like to proceed. The line 203, the CIP chart basically shows you the changes to the three CIP projects in the amount of just under $500,000 to the transportation components. They are made up of three projects that are described on lines 104, and 106 through 149. They're $3 amounts. The 145 is Roosevelt Intersection improvements. We had an opportunity on short notice to apply for these grants, and VDOT will match it. And so this one is actually one of the few ones you haven't seen with all the transportation projects you have seen over the years. But this is consistent with many of the discussions we've been having with transportation improvements. The plan to improve pedestrian crosswalks and crossings at several of our intersections, this one in particular, Roosevelt Street and Roosevelt Boulevard. So staff, of course, supports the receipt of that grant. The Broad Street enhancements is one that has reached its three-year time limit. CIPs, if they're not, started acting to expend the monies, have to come back for reappropriation or their loss. So we request the reappropriation of those for finishing out the work in the 400 West Street, West Broad Street. The timing of this and the delay was just a matter of a lot of things coming together and staff resources to deploy it. The last two items are labeled as other revenues, and they are the actual recognition of proffers previously approved as part of SEs that will be used to do the two intersections, as noted here, Washington and South Maple, Broad, and Pennsylvania. These items are before the commission, of course, pursuant to the city charter, section 6.19, that asks the Planning Commission for review and recommendation to council on CIP projects. And on the second page of the cover memo, there is a recommended motion for the Planning Commission's consideration. Glad to answer any questions.
Ms. Mester, do any commissioners have questions about this? Mr. Meeks?
So if we approve this, West Broad and Pennsylvania, which we have been talking about since 2002 and was, I think, originally supposed to be done in 2005, when are we anticipating it will actually get done?
The staff work for design with the consultant has actually started, so I think the city engineer anticipates by spring. This indeed has been talked about for quite a bit, but unfortunately, the cost came in higher than the proffer, so then we had to secure the other money, and now we're appropriating the proffers. So I think it is in the near-term horizon, and if weather is kind to us, it may start earlier than spring.
And so, okay, well, all right.
Any other questions for Ms. Mester? Mr. Lawrence?
For the three you just talked about, or maybe four, the ones in, starting on line 102, are these all going to be funded with bonded money from the city?
No, because these are grants.
Well, I mean, with the matches. You've got one that says "in kind," you know, you've got another that the existing funds in the operating budget require, another one requires a $75,000 match. I'm just trying to figure out why we're, if they're not somehow tied to a bond that has a timing question, why are we doing these now rather than just waiting for the CIP to come in the regular course of business?
Staff is ready to move on them, and we've had a lot of pressure for business, you know, signals and the ped crossings. And the grant one for the Roosevelt Intersection actually has a time constraint from VDOT. So since staff was already processing a budget amendment, which we don't like to do real regularly, but it was timely, it was there, we wanted to bring it forward and get the projects going sooner than later.
Okay, but basically, we're sort of preapproving these for the CIP that we start in about a month and a half.
Well, these are amending the FY12 CIP that's already adopted, and then we'll be starting the process for FY13 through 18. And if we wait till that, the money won't be available till next July, so it'll stop all of these projects till then. Even though council will adopt a budget in April, it's not effective till July. So you'd lose six, seven months of progress.
Okay. And then the other question I had was on lines 76 and 77, where it talks about how in December, well, basically, starting next week, the city's going to issue bonds, including $1.3 million for City Hall, City Hall entrance, police station expansion. And maybe, I brought my, I got to the point of bringing my CIP but not actually going through it. These are all things that we approved last year?
Correct.
As part of, okay.
So these are only the appropriated FY12 CIP projects for City Hall and the TJ expansion. That's the TJ expansion on CC, line 78, is the local money to match or parallel the Q scabs, and then the Park Master Plan. So all approved in your current CIP. We just haven't issued the bonds, and that takes council resolution. So we were just rolling everything up into one action.
Okay, but the basic point getting to Mr. Meeks is, if we do this now, things will start to move now? Because there's been a lot of complaints about all these traffic lights, and I'm getting tired of hearing him talk about them.
We don't want to wait till next July.
Ms. Hockenberry?
Um, when the facilities thing was brought up, aren't we supposed to have a facility committee?
Yes, we are.
That I'm supposed to be part of?
Yes, you are.
Okay.
And currently, where the Assistant City Manager is on this workload, she has gotten the cost estimates in and have gotten most of my IT responsibility and legislation done. And my goal is, early of December, we will be convening that task force.
Because if we've got this money coming in, we've got to--
And we have the needs, and we're ready to go. So actually, last week, I got a detailed cost estimate in because, as you recall, council requested me to get more details versus just my, and city engineers' internal estimates. So we'll now have information to convene the task force and some good work to work on.
Just asking when my workload of meetings is going to be picking up.
I hope after Thanksgiving and before Christmas holiday.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Mester? I did want to mention that I live close to the Roosevelt, Roosevelt intersection, which is heavily used by a lot of citizens going between East Falls Street Metro and Eden Center and Oakwood Cemetery and Oakland Apartments. And it is a difficult intersection to see pedestrians try to get across. It's very wide, and it's really hard to tell where cars are coming because it's basically between hills. So I'm glad to see us do some work there because I take that turn a lot, and you really have to watch for people walking through there, especially at night. Do we have a motion?
I will make a motion. And especially as someone passionate about that signal on Pennsylvania Avenue and Broad Pursuant to section 6.19 of the city charter and section 17.8 of the city code, the Planning Commission recommends approval to the City Council of Ordinance TO 11-22 to amend the budget of expenditures and revenues of the general fund, the water fund, and the capital improvements fund to appropriate grants, bond proceeds, and the use of fund balance.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Do we have any other questions or comments? Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Mr. Lofterson?
Yes.
Mr. Meeks?
Yes.
Ms. Teetz?
Yes.
Mr. Wodisca?
Yes.
Ms. Hockenberry?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Planning Commissioner members. I appreciate it, and also again, for amending your agenda for me.
You're welcome. I know you have to run downstairs now. Okay, we're going to move on to our other agenda item for new business, 502 Walden Court, subdivision, one lot into two lots, application 2011-0643. Mrs. Snyder, are we going to have a staff report? And did the applicant want to speak? We also have some public comment after that.
Ms. G is handling this case, and will make the staff report. And is the applicant prepared to make a presentation?
Yes, they are.
Okay. And then once they do theirs, we'll take the public comments.
All right. Thank you. The proposed subdivision is of an acreage parcel, real property code number 51-119-007, into two lots at 502 Walden Court. The city received a preliminary subdivision application from Walter Phillips on behalf of the property owner, Meredith Morrison. And the larger parcel, Lot 1, will be three, excuse me, 37,199 square feet. And the second lot, the total lot now is 37,199 square feet. The new Lot 1 will be 22,799 square feet, and the new Lot 2 would be 14,400 square feet. It's anticipated that the new Lot 2 would be developed with a single-family home and that the ruins of a former summer kitchen would be restored as an outdoor entertainment space. After staff had its preliminary review, we provided comments to the applicant and then met with them to discuss and clarify the staff comments. Following that meeting, a revised preliminary and final plat dated October 13, 2011, was submitted for staff consideration, and after further review, staff determined that the revised submission meets all code requirements. The subject property is protected under the city's Historic and Cultural Conservation Overlay District because the existing residential structure was built in 1898, and the property is currently known as Bonnie Briar. At the time of subdivision, an acreage parcel may be named if no subdivision name exists. The property owner, Mrs. Morrison, has requested that the subdivision be named after the historic house. Usually, such a recommendation from the applicant would go to the Historical Commission for review, comment, recommendation. Unfortunately, our Historical Commission has an insufficient number of members to meet and have a quorum at this time, so they're not able to make a recommendation. Following a procedure that we did with the 610 Fulton Avenue, this application also went to the HARB, the Historic Architecture Review Board, for review and comment. And the HARB expressed its full support for the thoughtful subdivision of a large parcel into two parcels. And the intent is to build that new home that would convey its association with, but not duplicate the historic structure. The city arbors has provided comments from his second review noting that the applicant should prepare for measures and costs associated with either protection or removal of off-site trees, and on maintaining or obtaining a minimum 20% tree coverage on Lot 2 post-construction at 10 years. You have the plat before you, and it shows where the house on Lot 2 would be located as well as the driveway. And it may appear that perhaps the driveway could be shorter in length if it were placed on the opposite side of the house. But because of an existing utility easement, that is not a possibility. So the owner is proposing a long driveway that would allow her access to enter the home, the new home, from the rear entrance. And based on staff comments, she has agreed to use porous pavers for the driveway, given the length of the driveway. The city's Public Works Department initiated a new policy that residential subdivisions, where it's only creating one new lot, are not going to go to the tree commission at that time, but rather they'll look at it before the SEBIR process looks at it, the grading plan. The staff recommendation is that the Planning Commission grant preliminary and final approval to a subdivision of the acreage parcel previously identified at 502 Walden Court, and that the subdivision be named Bonnie Briar. After the staff report was prepared and your packages were delivered on Wednesday, I had a call from an adjacent property renter who advised that it was his understanding that a private water line trans, trans, ax, or trans-- understanding that a private water line trans, trans, acts, or trans crosses a portion of the new Lot 2 and it might interfere with where the driveway is proposed. Having talked with other city staff, Rodney Collins from our city's Public Utilities Department, the city attorney, it's possible that the adjacent property owner and Mrs. Morrison can enter into an agreement about either relocating the line or having an easement agreement for that water line. But it should be based, the agreement that they reach should be subject to city approval. And you have revised motions at your place today that incorporate that additional condition. The applicant's civil engineer and architect are here this evening and I don't know where they are. They're perhaps outside. So that concludes the staff report.
Well, do we have any questions for Ms. G on the staff report?
No.
Do you want to go see if the applicant's ready? Actually, if you could speak down where the microphone is?
It's a podium.
It's a podium?
Oh, okay. Whoever the primary speaker is, we need name and address and at the microphone.
No problem. Just want to make sure we could hear you and have you on the recording.
Madam Chair and members of the Planning Commission, I'm Paul Barkley, Architect, Falls Church, Virginia. And I'm representing Meredith Morrison who desires to subdivide her residential property, Bonnie Breyer, at 502 Walden Court. I'm sure most of you are familiar with Meredith and her late husband, Bob Morrison. Together, they purchased Bonnie Breyer in the, in the early 80s. It's a historic 1898 house. At the time they bought it, it was in deplorable condition, in a state of disrepair and covered with kudzu. And if you'd like to see what that looked like, Meredith has a wonderful scrapbook that shows the original conditions and the work that she's done on it. The two of them lovingly restored the house over a two-year period before they could move in and after which they continued their improvements, efforts for many years thereafter. Restoration of the grounds was also part of the attention the Morrisons gave to bring Bonnie Breyer back to life. Today, their two children in college and out on their own, Meredith seeks to live in a house more appropriate to her evolving lifestyle without giving up the pleasures and continued enjoyment of her accomplishments in historic preservation and landscape design. The solution, as she concluded, is to design and build her retirement home on an expansive wide yard to the right of the Bonnie Breyer. The home should provide accessible accommodations for her as she enters her senior years and she expressed. This included providing for living and dining spaces as well as a master bedroom suite, an accessible bathroom, all conveniently arranged within a single commodious floor, a one-story house. The principal living space, she stated, should be oriented to take in the view of the historic property next door. The two bedrooms for her children or guests when they visit could be tucked into dormers beneath a broad roof, she added. The design solution is depicted on the accompanying drawings. To reduce the apparent size and retain a significant separation from the existing house, approximately 50 feet, the new house will take on an elongated form running along the side yard property line. A front porch picking up design hints from the twin porches of Bonnie Breyer is situated in a line, in line with the Bonnie Breyer porches and spaced on equal, an equal distance from the property line. The design en masse of the resulting design create a sense that the new structure is a subsidiary structure to the main house, a cottage, if you will. In fact, the original property contains such accessory structures, including a barn and chauffeur's cottage, which still exist on the, on the adjacent property. In other words, a new cottage is designed to be an integral part of an entire parcel, hopefully conveying the sense that it has always been there. I'll be glad to answer any questions about the design in the building. Also present tonight is John Gavarkovich, Senior Project Manager with Walter L. Phillips, who prepared the subdivision applications and its related documents, who will respond to all the technical questions. John?
Do Commissioners have any questions for the applicant at this point? No. Okay. We have a speaker slip. Mr. Perry Wofter, if you'd like to come up and speak, if you'd just give your name and your address.
Mr. Wofter has prepared a package and I have a copy of that. I'll provide it to you in your next distribution.
Okay.
I'm Perry Wofter and I'm in the same subdivision there as Mrs. Morrison. And she and her husband have been very great neighbors, as usual. And I'm not interested in knocking anything down that they're going to build or anything else. What I'm, is, want to do is two things. You will receive a letter that I wrote in 2003 to the electric company concerning high voltage lines going through the back of the property, of my property and others, and, and Ms. Morrison. And they, I accused them, of course, in writing of doing this without proper applications and et cetera, and easements. And they wrote back a letter, just sort of thanking me and that was it. And the high tension wires have been there ever since. Now, I think Ms. Morrison is going to take those down. I'm not sure. But it appeared that in the last plan I saw, that, that those big wires are coming down. They run through the back of my property. And I want those removed. They're unsafe and they have not got a, have never gotten a permit that is Dominion Electric. You'll see the letter that they wrote back to me about it. And the second thing is that right at, at the Morrison's property and my property, you'll find it on your plat there. It's number seven and it's on mine, too. And the, and Bob Morrison brought this to my attention in 2003. And it is that the fence has been put in and put up on my property, three feet. So I want the fence moved back down to the proper place. There's nothing to it and it's no big thing. It's just that you'll find there the marker put in by the state marking off these, this property. It's a, it's, it's not hard to miss. And those are the only two things I'd like to, and I'm all for, for Ms. Morrison. Her husband was great. I loved him. He was a great guy. He's the one who showed me that the, that my property lacked three feet there for the, for the fence. And it's all on these papers that I, I'm sorry that I didn't have enough for everyone.
No problem. Thank you, Mr. Wofter. I, you know, obviously tonight, we can't deal with the Dominion Electric issue nor the fence because we're dealing with the subdivision tonight, but once we get your letters, we can look through the information you provided. Thank you.
You'll see a letter there from Dominion to me. It was not too good.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Will I hear from you?
I think we'll, we'll look at the letter and this is perhaps something that staff will have to look at in terms of if Dominion Electric had the right of way to do that. In terms of the fencing, it was, is that, that fencing may be a private issue, but we'll review the letter and see what we can do for you.
Good. That'd be great. I've been a lawyer for 60 years and this is one case that I don't think it's possible to lose.
Okay, thank you. I have another speaker slip for Mr. Sean Van Stein. Maybe you come up to the microphone and state your name and address. That would be helpful. Thank you. And you have three minutes.
No kind of most of you. But I haven't been here for a while. It's Sean Van Stein and I live at 406 Lincoln Avenue, Falls Church, Virginia, 22046. Oh, it's my turn to talk?
Put the speaker slip in, so yes.
I know. It seems the times I've been here in the past, I've been limited to three minutes and it's sometimes hard to get things out in that time.
Still limited to three minutes, so hope for the best.
Do you have an extra one for staff?
I was rushing to get here and I only had time to print, get this ready and print six. So I need something to read from so you can go along. So whichever of you feel friendliest to each other, maybe you can share one. The first page is a review board for HARB that I did attend. At that time, I wrote a note on the bottom, I questioned the property lines because they appeared different. So I spoke with Mr. G and said that I would be sending him a plat map of the property. And that is the third page along. First two pages is just to do with HARB. The page after that is an aerial photograph of the property. What I've done, I've kind of guessed, this was mentioned, the water line thing. And I've been doing quite a bit of research and there is nothing written about it. So I don't know exactly what the situation would be, where the building is going, where the driveway is going. I will speak with Meredith, of course, because she's been my neighbor for many, many years. And Bob and her and myself have always gotten along very well. So one is to make sure on the markings of the property. The second one is the water situation. And the last thing is, there's a huge, big oak tree. I took this picture this evening, actually, and also took a picture of the adobe house, which, you know, looks kind of quaint. And the last picture is like a Christmas card for you. That's a photograph of the barn. It was the first cover as a photographer that I've ever sold. But the situation with the tree is, speaking with our previous arborist, the picture doesn't do it justice. It's about twice the size. It's humongous. But when you're using a wide lens camera, I took this this evening, by the way, you don't get the real, what the eye sees. I'm a professional photographer and I didn't want to get my proper equipment out in the rain. What I'm worried about is maybe the trees, the roots being hacked away, torn, which were weak in it. And this isn't a simple, well, none of the trees around there are simple. Each year, you know, something falls down, huge. And this is so pretty. In the summer, it's absolutely something you should see. If any of you haven't been up there to see the barn or that piece of property, we are in the history books. I'd recommend to go. You feel like you're in heaven, not six miles from the White House. So all in all, it's three basic issues, the property lines, the water situation, and the tree. If it's going to be paved, I don't know if there's a way where there's a form of paving that can be porous, because even though it's going to lose a bunch of its roots, it still needs to eat. And if paving is there, it won't be able to, sorry, eat, not drink. And that's it.
Thank you.
I hope it was brief enough.
It was brief enough. And actually, the aerial photo was actually very nice. Thank you. I will say that the trees issue will be dealt with during the site plan. The arborist will be involved in it.
Agreed.
I'm assuming staff has reviewed the property line issue?
Yes, and that's why the arborist had commented that the property owner of Bonnie Breyer may incur some cost in saving off-site trees.
Okay.
And, and that was noted in your staff report. But in case you were not in the, in the room at the time I gave my staff report, they are planning, Mrs. Morrison is planning to use porous pavers to make a driveway for Lot 2.
Excuse me, I can't hear properly.
She was saying that the applicant plans to use porous pavers instead of an asphalt driveway, which would allow some water to come through.
Right.
And, and there were definitely, the city always works with, the city arborist always works with applicants to try to protect trees and to make sure that, you know, a tree like this would survive. So I think the process should work well for the tree.
That's some really good news because part of the reason of buying this piece of property, which is quite a lump, I mean, I live in a very simple house, but you just wouldn't want to know what the property taxes are on it. But I did save a bit of history and...
Okay. Well, thank you.
That property is staying. But like I said, if you haven't been up there, I know some of you might have, but if you haven't, have a look.
It's quite lovely. Thank you. Okay, we have one more speaker slip from Robert, is it Dismukes?
Yes.
Okay. And if you can walk up and give your name and your address in three minutes, please.
Thank you, Madam Chairman and members of the Commission. I'm Robert Dismukes. I live at 504 Walden Court, which shows up as Lot Number Seven on the little plan here. I lived there with my wife, Jennifer. We've, we've lived there for a little over seven years and we're very happy to have the Morrisons as our neighbors. And we would like to speak in, or I would like to speak in support of what they're doing here. I think it's a wonderful idea. We would, we are particularly supportive of the idea of seeing that Bonnie Breyer is preserved somehow. We see Bonnie Breyer out our back windows. We will see Meredith's new house, the cottage, out of our side windows. And so we really are quite interested in that our views out the back are preserved. And this looks like an excellent plan that will do that. I'm also happy to hear that Meredith is planning to use these porous pavers on the drive there because we can also see over to the barn and the trees. And we are very much would like that to continue and see the trees. We will see Meredith's new house, the cottage, out of our side windows. And so we really are quite interested in that our views out the back are preserved. And this looks like an excellent plan that will do that. I'm also happy to hear that Meredith is planning to use these porous pavers on the drive there because we can also see over to the barn and the trees. And we very much would like that to continue and see the trees being healthy there. So don't have any objections to what they're doing, just a few concerns about drainage. We are downhill from both Bonnie Brier and the new development, and our concern is always about water coming down the hill when we have these heavy rainstorms, both after the house is built and during the construction, so.
Thank you for your comments. And I just want to make it clear for all the neighbors that as part of this process, there will be a SEABRIT review, which is for the Chesapeake Bay ordinance. And they will, during that review, you guys will get a notice. Anyone living within a certain distance from the property will get a notice for it. And that's a great place to go when you have questions about the runoff. This is, the city engineer will be there, different staff people will be there to be your chance to ask questions and to look at how the water is going to move, and also to look at the tree protection. So when you get that SEABRIT notice, try to see if you can make that meeting. Okay, does the Commissioners have any comments or questions at this point, of anyone? No? Can we get a motion?
Thank you. I move that the Planning Commission grant preliminary and final approval to a subdivision of an acreage parcel, RPC number 51-119-007, into proposed lots 1 and 2 at 502 Walden Court, Munis number 20110643, that the subdivision be named Bonnie Brier, and that any relocation of existing privately-owned water line be subject to city approval.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion at this point? Mr. Lawrence?
I'd just like to say, I think this is a great combination of giving somebody who's been in the city for 30 years the ability to stay here, knowing in advance that at some point, you know, the capabilities are going to get less, but still preserving, you know, A, a historic structure, and B, trees. And speaking to the trees, I had a new house come up behind me, and, you know, you have rights when there are trees on your property, and you obviously have someone who cares about trees, given their property. So I think, you know, between the city, your neighbor, and your interests, definitely go to the SEABRIT review. It's very important. And, you know, trees can be protected, and you're living in the right place to do that. But I just think it's great that we've got somebody who restored a home and wants to stay in the city and is doing it in a very, you know, a very good way.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I want to agree with Mr. Lawrence's statement. When I first saw the subdivision, I thought I was very happy to see the way the historic property is really protected. You know, you could get another situation where a person could choose to move out or move into, you know, a condo or something, and someone else could take that property and try to fit several houses on there. So this is a really great boon to the city that we protect that historic property, but also get a nice home for the applicant.
So you know other comments? Can we get a roll call vote?
Mr. Lofterson?
Yes.
Mr. Meeks?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Ms. Teetz?
Yes.
Mr. Wodisca?
Yes.
Ms. Hockenberry?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, the motion passes. And like I said, this process will be moving forward, and those of you that are neighbors, please go to the SEABRIT meeting, you'll get a notice, and that'll give you more information about more specifics about like water flow and tree protection. Okay, thank you. And we have no other business, so we're going to move on to approval of the minutes. Does anyone have any comments or changes for those minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor approving these minutes? Oh, I'm sorry.
Move to adopt the minutes?
Second.
Okay, second. I'm sorry, I'm trying to help Mr. Meeks along, get out. Okay, all those in favor approve the minutes? Aye. Any opposed? No? Okay, can I get a motion for adjournment?
So move.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, no opposed? We are adjourned.